This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, February 14th. Please stand for our invocation led by Adam Lionberry Redeeming Eden and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. God, Father, Friend, you alone are holy, you alone are worthy, you are worthy of our time, our adoration, our praise, and our love. Your word says in 1 John 4:16 that we have known and believed that the love of, that the love God has for us, God is love and he who abides in love, abides in God and God in him. I'm thankful this morning that we have dedicated this day, Valentine's Day, as a day of love, a day of love for our spouses, significant others, children, family, friends, coworkers, and the list goes on. Please receive our show of love to each other today as a gift of love to you. Thank you for, Father, thank you, Father, for loving us like you do. I pray today that you would cover the city of Mobile and fill the leaders present here today with a measure of love that will run over to every citizen of our great city. May that love be evident in every thought, every statement, and every decision that is brought forth in this meeting today. I pray this in the matchless name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's good to see everybody on this Valentine's morning. Happy Valentine's Day, especially to all the ladies. Welcome to our February 14th, 2023 meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put it on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, appeal, or plebiscuit hearing, agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2 o'clock PM on the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to address to the council must be identified and retained to the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item and would like to address the council would not be allowed to do so. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there should be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and a public outcry allowed. And I stated two weeks ago, and I'm gonna say for the next two weeks, at this meeting, we do not allow for public-private conversation in the ordinance. If you do so, I will stop the meeting, let you finish your conversation, and once you finish, I will ask the speaker to go ahead and finish speaking. Okay? One more week of that. Madam City Clerk.
Approval of minutes of February 7.
Okay.
They're proffering to move in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Morning.
Good to see everybody this morning. Appreciate you being here. This is, as you know, this is Black History Month, and part of our program this week, we have what we're calling a community walk and talk. It'll be at Hernan Sage Park at 6:00 PM tomorrow, so we hope that you'll be there. The participants will have an opportunity to talk with local community leaders such as healthcare professionals, first responders, educators, legal professionals, and government officials, and more. So Hernan Sage Park, 6 o'clock tomorrow evening. You know, happy Valentine's, happy Valentine's Day to everybody. I wished my Valentine a happy day when we woke up this morning. She's a very special person, and I hope that all of you have a very special person in your life because it certainly makes a difference. Right now, it's kind of all things Mardi Gras. That's what's on the foremost of most people's mind. So far, we've had over 200,000 people that have come to the parades, have been downtown. I want to thank our public safety employees as well as the Public Works employees for all they do, each Mardi Gras, to make it safe and also to clean up afterwards. I'd like to share a short story with you. We had a group of executives in and decision-makers for all the commercial airlines in America, plus that would be the legacy carriers and all the low-cost carriers. Many of them had never been to Mobile, so they were going to go to a parade Thursday night, which they did. And so as they viewed the parade, and they were kind of impressed with the floats and all, but when the Public Works crew came by and started cleaning up, cleaning up, they went, oh, my gosh, where did they come from? So for those of you that have never seen what our Public Works teams do to clean up, it is amazing. So kudos to them. Going back to the public safety part of it just for a moment, everybody wants to have a safe Mardi Gras, and we bill it as being a family-friendly Mardi Gras. But we can have all the policemen, every policeman that we have on the department can be in the streets, but we need the public's help, help in making sure that we have a safe Mardi Gras. So you can be our eyes and ears and help us out, and we would encourage you to do so. Going back to the cleanup just for a minute, I think we've picked up 3,000, almost 3,300 pounds of litter off the streets, but we also picked up 1,030 pounds of beads which we've given to the Augusta Evans School so that those beads can be recycled. You know, it kind of wouldn't be Mardi Gras without all the organizations starting to have their, not just the parades, but their parties and so forth. And we have a special group of gentlemen with us representing MAMGA. And so if y'all would all just stand, I think you'll be able to recognize them without standing, but they're the ones with the maroon coats on. And I have a proclamation that I would like to read, but I would ask the president of the organization to please come to the podium. Mr. Tenaro Rice and anybody else, Mr. Rice, that you want to bring to the podium with you. Okay, so the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Mobile Area Mardi Gras Association, MAMGA, is a nonprofit organization incorporated in 1938 under the trusteeship of W.L. Russell, J.T. McInnis, Sam Bastida Jr., and J.A. Franklin, and whereas the mission of MAMGA is to promote knowledge, arts, science, and to cultivate interest in the celebration of carnival activities at Mardi Gras, and to encourage members to participate in all events that will enhance our civic and national betterment, and whereas MAMGA held its first parade in 1939 and presented its first royal court in 1940, and whereas MAMGA proudly celebrates 85 years as an active organization of African-American men who live the mission of the organization and continue the tradition of service, education, and revelry, now therefore I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby recognize the 85th anniversary of the Mobile Area Mardi Gras Association. Congratulations, gentlemen, and thank you for what you do."
Just, just one more before we take that picture. And on behalf of the City Council, no problem, the mayor presented a proclamation, and the City Council presented a resolution. I will just read the last sentence. Now therefore be resolved that we, the members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby express our appreciation and your gratitude to the Mobile Area Mardi Gras Association for the dedication to enhance the city of Mobile and its colorful sphere for 85 years down at the City of Mobile, Alabama, to this 14th day of February 2023, and is signed by all the council members. At this time, the Mobile Area Mardi Gras Association would like to thank Mayor Stimson for the warm words. We thank him for the, for the proclamation. Also, we'd like to thank the City Council for the resolution and let the good times roll. And also, Mayor.
Ah, thank you very much. So one thing I know, at being the mayor, is that I've been able to have the opportunity to attend the MAMGA celebration over the last 10 years. Light it every year, and I made it every year, but you don't have to tell these guys to let the good times roll. They know how to do that. So thank y'all. And at this time, Jim Delamp will introduce our Public Works Employee of the Month.
Well, good morning. I just wanted to follow up on what the mayor mentioned earlier about Mardi Gras and the Public Works team working to make sure we have a clean, efficient, and effective Mardi Gras. You know, other than just the cleanup afterwards, there's a whole lot of work that goes into preparation and execution of the Mardi Gras events. And the employees that are going to be recognized today have various roles, not just in, in Mardi Gras, but in other things in Public Works. But it is a lot of work to get that done. These employees who have normally long days, start very early, have even longer days and nights, and so we really can't be, can't thank them enough for what they do every single day and evening during this season. And I know at the end of it, they're ready for some rest. And just one correction on, on that, the amount of litter and recyclables that we picked up, that 3,000 pounds is just recyclables. So our crews go out, and as you know, they'll come through with the equipment, and we have actual recycling teams that come through and try and pick out all the things that we can to recycle, so our cardboard boxes and all those things. We pull that out ahead of the trucks and the sweepers coming through and getting that, that, the debris up. And Mark Vasallo mentioned the other day, I think, just in one parade, I think, Mark, last Saturday, was it 10 trailers? Five trailers, four or five trailers loaded with stuff that they sweep up on the streets. And so you know how big those green trailers are. That was just from one parade, and the big, heavy parades are starting this coming week. So a lot of stuff, a lot of cleanup, and they do a great job. So with that, I'd like Chad Collins to come down with Carl Lewis, and Chad is from our Parks and Rec Department. He's going to introduce Mr. Carl Lewis, who's our Parks and Rec Employee of the Month.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'd like to present to some and introduce to others, Mr. Carl Lewis. Mr. Carl Lewis has been with Connie Hudson Senior Center for over 15 years. He's what I call a supervisor's dream because he, he's the kind of person that's proactive, and he does what needs to be done without having to be told. His other coworkers love him because he is very considerate to his fellow coworkers, especially, and as well as our participants. So without further ado, Mr. Carl Lewis, y'all.
I would just like to say thank you for this honor.
Mr. President, one word.
Uh, Mr. Jones.
While you're taking your picture, I just want to say thank you for all you do, and I don't think you realize how special you are to the folks that visit the Connie Hudson Center, and most of them are retired, and they're family, and you're a part of that family. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to have Todd McClung from our Inspections and Bill Mobile Department come down and introduce Mr. Nathan Goldman, who's the Public Works at Large Employee of the Month.
Nathan Goldman has been with the city for a little over three and a half years and has over 30 years of experience in construction. His expertise is sought after by other building inspectors. Contractors ask for him specifically for assistance. He helps the homeowners, giving them very sound advice when they request it, and always looking ahead. He's reviewing his assignments for the next day, so he always knows what's coming to him the next day. He's also eager to learn, and that he takes classes online constantly. Nathan is a very worthy candidate for this award.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Carroll.
I've never seen Nathan that shy before in my life. As a builder, he comes out on a site and he will get after it, but great guy. I'm disappointed that the city swapped you to the western side of the city instead of our side of the city. Maybe you get a chance to come by and visit us a little bit more often. Congratulations on this great achievement, man. Look for you outside.
Thank you. And last but not least, our Public Services Employee of the Month, I'm gonna have Jeff Dees come and recognize Freddie Bell.
Mr. Bell was not able to be present today. I'll set this on his behalf. Freddie's one of our, our most experienced operators. He operates a Nookaboom Sanitation Department. He, he's been with the city for almost 25 years. Freddie's one of our best team players that we have. When Freddie completes his daily assignments, he always calls up the supervisors and requests additional assignments to go, to get done and help the other routes. He is respectful of all of his coworkers. He also, he volunteers for all events such as Mardi Gras, the, the Linnin Tree Bowl Parade and everything like that. He does a great job, and we're lucky to have Freddie with us.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Daves.
While we've got so many people from public services here today, I'd just like to say that this morning, as I was driving down Church Street, there was a garbage truck in front of me. They were picking up garbage along the street, and the guy on the back of the truck had no reason to know who I was. I was just some motorist on Church Street. But he turned around and he waved me a head of the, come on, waved me ahead of the truck, and had a big smile on his, a big smile on his face at the time he did it. So I just, I thought that was very commendable. I don't know who the guy was, but I just wanted to let you know about that.
Thank you.
It, it just says a lot about everybody that works and does that work.
Appreciate that.
Mr. President, that concludes my remarks, but I see a lot of the gentlemen, MAMGA's still here, and if they would like to be excused, now may be a good time, or y'all are welcome to stay to the bitter end. Thank y'all for coming.
Mr. President, I'd like to acknowledge there's a lot of Mobile history walking out of that door. Tom Withers, Valena McCants's younger brother, Eric Finley, from the historic family, Finley Family, Ben LaFeet from the bottom, and just so many more long-term historic, long-term, don't look at me like that, Eric, longtime historic Mobile families here. Glad to see y'all today, guys.
Thank you all. Madam Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
Second. They're proffering to move in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on February 18th on Lanier Avenue, February 9th through the 21st on North Broad Street, February 18th through the 21st on Government Street, March 10th, 11:00 AM until 3:00 PM in Mardi Gras Park, March 18th, 11:00 AM until 10:00 PM on Charleston Street, April the 22nd, 6:00 PM until 11:00 PM on North Monterey Street, August 26th, 7:00 AM until 3:00 PM in Cooper Riverside Park, and February 19th from 12:00 PM until 5:00 PM on North, South Broad Street.
No move. Second. They're proffering to move in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeals passed.
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to declare the structures at 1816 Tomlin Avenue, 1342 Congress Street, 922 South Hamilton Street, 7131 Second Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
This so-called public hearing for these said items, does anyone present that would like to address the council, who may come down to the podium stating your name and your address? Again, this opens up the public hearing for these said items. Does anyone present? If not, the public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council.
Good morning, Mr. President, City Council, Mayor Administration. My name's David Clark with Visit Mobile. We support the tourism of our great city. Today, we have a history video to show you. We constantly are telling the story of our six pillars, the history, the arts, the culture, the culinary, the eco, the Mardi Gras. And with me today is the creator and the scriptor of this video, our very talented creative brand manager, Oliver Dorgan, a very own Mobilean, graduated from Spring Hill. Anything with visual content that you see coming out of our social media or anything, these new destination guides has his stamp of approval, has his leadership, he's truly inspiring, and we're really grateful to have his leadership. So Ollie, I'm gonna let you take it.
Thank you, David. Over a year and a half ago, we started a project to create a video to give visitors a sense of history of Mobile. While Visit Mobile's motto is born to celebrate, Mobile's history isn't always something to celebrate. It became clear that we would need to treat this video with a sense of reverence and inspiration. It's not easy to tell some stories of Mobile history, but every story, good or bad, must be told, for our history is what makes us who we are today. And with that, here is Visit Mobile's pillar video, Our Living History.
Our 300-year-old story winds and turns like the banks of the Tom Diggby River. Through the years, living statues have towered overhead. Watching the growth of our city, from humble beginnings to a center of commerce. We have embraced the currents that formed who we are today. Our cornerstones are as strong as the roots from which we've grown. As the oldest city in Alabama, our traditions span centuries. We have prospered under many flags and continue to fly them every day. From brick-laden streets where legends walked and trolleys rolled, we celebrate the individuals and circumstances that have shaped and molded our city. Mobile native and homegrown king Hank Garrett. What took men years to build took Frederick hours to destroy. But we're gonna try, we're gonna come back. Down in Mobile, they're all crazy, the land clowns, ghosts, and musicians. We've reached deep into the earth and found relics from times gone by. A huge finding in the Mobile Tensaw Delta could be the last American slave ship of dark time in our nation's history. The banks of the delta have nurtured and protected our history for generations. Our streets are lined with glimpses of the past. And our ancestors live on through the antiquities on our walls. Their stories are rich and captivating. Some you want to hear, while some are hard to hear. But every story must be told, because Mobile isn't just one thing, it is so many. And our 300-year-old story is far from over. Come visit our living history and help us write the next chapter.
Any questions, comments from the council? Mr. President. Yeah, Mr. Penn. That was a really amazing video. You know, this past couple weeks, you saw a lot of things taking place in our city, nation, and you know, we got Mardi Gras here, and it's, it's great to tell our story. And I think it's telling our story. I think we can't forget about the past, but we also have to tell it. It's important. If you don't know your past, then you can't move into your future. And I think Mobile, to me, I always tell, I think it's the best city in the world, but it's if we make it. So I want to thank you personally, because I, we needed it. Anyone else? Yeah, thank you all so much for the presentation.
Adam Lionberry.
Mr. President, Council, Mayor. 83,000, that is how many Americans died between June 2019 and June 2020 from drug overdose. It was during that time that God moved me to begin redeeming.
Yes, it's your full name and your address.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yes, sir.
Adam Lionberry.
Address.
8582 Fernwood Loop, north Sims, Alabama, 36575.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. 83,000, that is the, that is how many Americans died between June 2019 and June 2020 from drug overdose. It was during that time that God moved me to begin redeeming Eden. Going back in 2007, Jesus set me free from drug addiction at the Mission of Hope. Having later worked at the mission for six years, I had seen that the answer to the scourge of addiction for anyone was Jesus, genuine love. Seeing the increase in deaths, by February of 2020, I set out to build a Christian addiction recovery facility. I became a nonprofit through international gospel outreach and started a 48-state, four-year, self-supported bicycle ride for addiction recovery awareness. Each day, I've logged my journeys on my YouTube channel, Redeeming Eden. The main goal of each day's ride was to inform people that addiction recovery options are available for free at churches that celebrate recoveries and rescue missions all over the nation and all over. at churches that celebrate recoveries and rescue missions all over the nation and all over the world. Many of those facilities right here in our city. Second to that main goal, but equal however, each day as I pedal, I ride in memory of someone who has lost their life too soon to an addiction-related circumstance. I display that person's name of whom I ride for and the first 20 seconds of each daily video on the Redeeming Eden YouTube channel. I've now traveled 20,000 miles, broken into four 5,000-mile ultra marathon bike rides covering 46 states, over 400 full days of cycling from somewhere to somewhere for someone. The lion's share of those memorials has been for families right here in our great city of Mobile, Alabama. Addiction recovery, when one of our citizens really grasps it affects our city in a profoundly positive way, it takes someone dangerous out from behind the wheel of a vehicle, protecting our precious families. It lowers the crime rate, lessening the burden on our officers in the line of duty. It helps the man, the man or woman who may not have been able to hold a steady job, find real lasting employment, bringing in income and sales taxes. It lowers the incarceration rate, taking the burden of the cost of the prison system off of the taxpayers. Three minutes fails me to list the many ways that real addiction recovery affects our community for the better. Put quite simply, rehabilitation is always preferential to incarceration, is always preferential to death. I'll be finishing the rides on September 17th this year in Monument Valley, Utah, where Forrest Gump ended his run, uh, and where I'll finally get tired and go back home to Alabama. I would love to have the city of Mobile, my city, the city I was born in, watching and supporting Redeeming Eden as I cross the finish line. Prayer is the one thing I desire the most. Subscribing to the Redeeming Eden YouTube channel and supporting Redeeming Eden financially through International Gospel Outreach are other fantastic ways to help keep the wheels rolling toward building a rehab. As I close, for those of you who have seen Forrest Gump, you know that he's synonymous with the fictional Green Bo, Alabama. My hope is that when people hear my story, that the city on their lips and in their hearts will be our very real hometown, Mobile, Alabama. Thank you for your time, have a happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
Nice beard. Look just like Forrest.
Um, for those of you, those of you that don't know, Adam is the son of, uh, one of our former secretaries, um, Sharon Caraway that worked in our office. Thomas Mitchell.
Not here.
Ryan McMillan.
Not here.
Bridget Goud.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning to our City Council and City official. My name is Bridget Goud. I reside at 7236 Ellinan Circle, Theodore, Alabama, 36582. I'm here today on behalf of citizens of Theodore requesting our promised recreation center at Heroes Park. I don't want you to miss this. There were promised plans to build a recreation center on the site at Heroes Park under past Mayor Sam Jones tenure. We're quite aware, we're under a different administration with our present mayor, Senator Stinson, yet our request for our recreation center remains the same. Money was earmarked for the recreation center. Blueprints were drawn up for the recreation center. Simply put, money was set aside for that specific purpose. Former Mobile Mayor Sam Jones and former Councilman John Williams remain knowledgeable regarding our recreation center as part of Theodore's inception into annexation October of 2008, some 15 years ago. We speak week after week on diversity and inclusiveness throughout the city, where every citizen of all backgrounds are given opportunities to participate in activities. We feel excluded. Councilman, our Councilman Reynolds stated on yesterday that.
Miss, you guys stop a minute, don't, can't call out no councilperson's name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, you start back.
Our Councilman stated on yesterday that there are other priorities such as roads, and there may be. However, that has nothing to do at all with the money that was earmarked and set aside for that particular purpose. I stand today in your presence, representing all citizens of Theodore, when I say we will not rest until we're able to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony, not for what you want us to have, but for what was promised to us, the Theodore community at Heroes Park. Furthermore, it was suggested on yesterday that we utilize the Boys and Girls Club in Theodore. That's not what was promised. In the words of my grandmother, it's high time to be people of our word. Lastly, with that said, we're looking to sit down with our Councilmen regarding this matter. Our prayer is that we are heard. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Reynolds.
I'd make a brief comment. Um, it was a pleasure speaking with you yesterday, Ms. Goud. Look forward to the Theodore community having a meeting, uh, inviting me down. And I'd, I'd be happy to sort of lay out the capital improvement plan that we've put together to allocate funds over the next five years. And I think you'll be excited to find out that we've got some roads that are in Theodore that have been under, underdeveloped for a number of years. It's within our plan to take care of some of those roads, uh, as well as take some of, take care of some drainage issues. And that's what I prioritize for that community, uh, based on feedback I've received from the community. And I look forward to sort of checking those boxes of, of things that we can do to improve the quality of lives of our citizens. So, thank you for coming down today.
Alright, Madam Clerk.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and I thank you to these younger people who are attending the meetings. Please stay engaged, and if it seems a little rushed today, there's a lot to cover in a very minimal amount of time. With that being said, uh, to the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street, I rise today to address spending, um, that serves a public purpose and formal request to conduct both a public safety committee meeting and a committee meeting of the whole. I should begin with the latter. Unfortunately, uh, as it pertains to development through demolition, upkeep of city property, uh, infrastructure, animals, housing, uh, capital improvement, the civic center, annexation, legal complaints, drainage, performance contracts, and proactive conflict resolution, uh, we have acted in the weakest of fashions as a city, uh, led reportedly by our lawmakers. This does not insist that those of you who each of us, uh, in this chamber ought to be facing are puny individuals. Uh, it instead suggests that the collective decisions, uh, you are privileged to make on behalf of Mobileans are extremely weak thus far. Uh, for example, last week we discussed a $1.9 million allocation for sidewalks. Uh, the city alluded that we never know what we're going to spend the money on because we can't project, uh, what we're going to face exactly when we begin a project, a particular or specific project. This to me, and I believe many will agree, is like saying you're going to college, but you have no clue of how that works exactly. Uh, let me paint the picture for you, in compliance with the rules, of course. This is what that means, Mr. Small. You and I are having a conversation. You tell me, hey, Mr. Hill, I'm going to college. And I tell you, oh, where you going? You tell me where that is. I respond, well, that's great. What are you studying? What's your major? He says, I don't have one of those. Now, me knowing that all students have standard courses, uh, before, uh, entering the degree field, I react, oh, you're just taking classes now. Uh, and he refrained like, uh, no, I'm not taking any classes. I immediately jump in, ah, you're waiting for that scholarship intuition to drop, to that, to post into your account. Then Mr. Small proclaims that he doesn't have either of those. Instantly, I interject, but you are enrolled, correct? He then asks, what is being enrolled? Finally, I inquire, have you received an admission letter to this specific university? Yet, Mr. Small tells me he has not. Now, in my head, I'm saying, so you're going to college, but you don't know exactly how that's going to work? That's what we're doing with the $1.9 million. Now, we don't have time for me to go into all these things I'd like to discuss, so you don't have to come back. So we're just gonna ask these questions and jump to the end. What is the status of successful in the future and other organizations alike receiving funds owed to them by the city? That's the first question. And then, secondly, what date is set for the next public safety committee meeting? We couldn't really get into all that. We touted a lot of stuff last week, and then about every day afterwards, we saw a whole bunch of incidents. And I think this is something we can proactively move on to prevent, improving the quality of life for our citizens. And lastly, what, um, date will be set for the committee meeting of the whole? What topics we'll discuss, and for each of those, what type of citizen engagement will be allotted? Because if we don't begin bringing everybody to the table, we're gonna continue seeing these matters take place in the city of LA. Thank you for you on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, one.
Mr. Reynolds.
I'd like to address, um, just a couple of things. I generally refrain from making too many comments here, but here I am making two today. Uh, with regard to the sidewalk contract, it is not, I don't think, anything like what you described, Mr. Hill. Um, what happens is the, the city comes to the council members and asks for their priorities for sidewalk repairs, that sort of thing. And we set out and re-engineer things. We have sidewalk professionals that we hire. We send them out and say, this is our priority area, and these are the things we want done. And then they just get on with doing the work. Instead of bringing in design engineers and redesigning all of these things, we can, we, we know sidewalk. We have contractors and professionals who know sidewalk. So, I think that's what the point was a couple of weeks ago or last week about, um, we don't know how far the money will go. I think that, that should sum it up.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Mr. Small, my name was invoked. My name was invoked.
No, sir.
That's why I was.
No, sir. You know the rules, Mr. Hill.
Those are the rules. My name was invoked. I would just like to.
Mr. Hill. Madam Clerk.
CIP resolutions held over. 21149 authorized contract with Parkin Smith for 2023 CIP citywide sidewalk repair and maintenance.
So moved.
Second.
They're probably moving second in the discussion.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President.
Ms. Gregory.
I appreciate Councilman Reynolds giving us the information. Had he not done it, I was prepared to do the same thing. This is something we started some years ago. They are for repairs and also for continuation of sidewalks where there are gaps. The council members work with the engineering staff year after year on these priorities. We put our priorities in a row. We have an estimated budget. They go out, they estimate how much each of these sidewalks will cost based on today's figures. And then our engineers and consultants, crews go out and they start doing the work. In my district, they go as far as my money will take them. And then I beg for more, if there's any available, to finish up the project. Whatever doesn't get done this year, year after next, we will continue on that priority list. That's how these sidewalks work. It's not that we don't know how much money is there, we don't know where they're going. It's, it's not this, we have no clue, because we do. It's just that we don't know exactly how much that's gonna cost in today's dollars when we go out to do the work. We estimate as best as possible, like we do on every other project within the city of Mobile.
Another discussion.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Jones.
I'll just add on to that. For my district, what that means is 23 different projects that were submitted to the city administration to be worked in my district. Of those, we'll probably get to three, based off of this funding. We may get to more, we may get to less, but I'm one district out of seven. So there's definitely the work to be done. And we know exactly what needs to be done, where it needs to be done, and how it needs to be done. What changes year over year is the cost. Thank you.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over, resolutions held over. 01106 authorized a project agreement between the city and Adam Street Property LLC. 01150 authorized agreement with Wally Inc. to electronically track local, small, and disadvantaged business participation with city contracts. 01151 authorized consulting service agreement with John Hoagard doing business as utility planning network. 08152 approved purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for Chevrolet Tahoe for public safety department. 08153 approved purchase order to Celebrite for forensic software renewal for Mobile Fire Rescue, for Mobile Police Department. 08154 approved purchase order to Toter for garbage cart lids and wheels. 08155 approved purchase order to Joe Bullet Chevrolet for Chevrolet Tahos. 08156 approved purchase order to Tamron for Dodge Ram crew cab pickup truck. 08157 approved purchase order to Hamco Tree Service for removal of various trees and stumps. 08158 approved purchase order to CDW Government for milestone X-Protect video management software. 09159 transfer funds from general fund, unassigned fund balance to capital improvement fund improvement for Government Street, 200 Government Street. 21160 authorized contract with Thompson Engineering for soft McGregor Avenue widening. 21161 authorized contract with engineered cooling services for chiller service and maintenance at various city locations. 21162 and 163 are authorizing contracts with geotechnical engineering testing for 2022 Pago resurfacing and, uh, contract with corporate environmental risk management for engineering services for 2022 Pago resurfacing. 6164 and 165 approving equal employment opportunity program and public transportation agency safety plans for the wave transit system. 6166 authorized settlement agreement and release of claims.
So moved.
Second.
They're probably moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes.
Ordinances being introduced, 09007 through 090110.
For council rules, these ordinances will lay over for one week.
And that's 09010. Consent resolutions being introduced, 31167 through 37202.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
They're probably moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules are waived.
31167 authorized a grant application to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management funded by the Gulf of Mexico Energy Security Act for Litter Trap Fund Program, No Local Match. 37168, 169, recommend, and 171 and 172 are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer-table wine offer misses only license for Family Dollar on Moffett Road for issuance of a retail beer-table wine offer misses only license for Family Dollar on North Broad Street for issuance of a retail beer-table wine offer misses only license for Family Dollar on Azalea Road issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Roll With It on Cottage Hill Road. 40173, 174, 175, 176 are declaring the structures at 1816 Tomlin Avenue, 1342 Congress Street, 922 South Hamilton Street, 7131 Second Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 58177 and 58078 are declaring weeds noxious group 1640 and assessing cost for removal of weeds, repeat weed lean group 58. 60179, 180, and 181 are approving award of special bonus to Public Works at Large Employee of the Month, Parks and Recreation Employee of the Month, Public Services Employee of the Month. 60182, 183, 184, 185, 186 are determining appropriations to Scarborough Model Middle School, Senior Citizen Services doing business as BIA, Hope Boxing Academy, Victory Health Partner, Inc., the Village of Spring Hills serve a public purpose and authorizing payment. 37202 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer-table wine offer misses only license to Doug's Quick Mark on Higgins Road.
So moved.
Second.
Second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passed.
37170 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer-table wine offer misses only license for Family Dollar on Dauphin Island Parkway.
Motion to lay over for one week.
Second.
Probably moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I didn't laid over for one week.
CIP resolutions being introduced, 21187. CIP resolutions being introduced, twenty-one, one eighty-seven.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of resolution twenty-one, one eight seven.
Second.
Properly moving, second, ending the discussion, Mr. Reynolds.
It's below the fifty thousand threshold.
I got you.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
Twenty-one, one eighty-seven, authorized contract with Espeleia for design services of combo field improvements at Figures and Trinity Parks. Forty-nine thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars.
So moved. And properly moving, second, ending the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions being introduced, zero eight, one eight eight through fifty, one nine nine.
These will be laid over for one week per council rules.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one, two hundred, call for public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to ten sixty-five LLC to operate a shuttle service scheduled February twenty-eighth. Forty-one, two zero one, call for public hearing to rezone property located at eleven oh one and eleven oh seven Old Shell Road from R one and B two to B two, scheduled March fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
And properly moving, second, ending the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements, Mr. President. The, I'd like to announce that the city council meeting on next Tuesday will be held on Wednesday.
District six, Councilman Jones. District two, Councilman Carr. District one, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will have our neighborhood planning meeting in Tomerville February the twenty-eighth at six PM at La Flora High School. We invite everyone to come out in Tomerville community. We are, this will be our third meeting. And so, I'm really excited. I want to thank the administration for helping put this on. This is one of the first times we're working on planning, creating a plan for our Tomerville community. And I believe that this plan will also help other communities throughout the city of Mobile to do the same. With that being said, this is Black History Month, and I would like to celebrate my predecessors before me. I would like to celebrate Vivian Figures. She was a strong advocate for children and family and education and health issues and service and driving force behind Senator Vivian Davis Figures. In nineteen ninety-three, she ran for Mobile City Council to be the voice for the voice. Due to ultimate death of her husband, Senator Michael Figures, she was later elected in nineteen ninety-seven in a special election with eighty-seven percent of the victory. She was re-elected in ninety-eight, and to this present, her election in nineteen ninety-seven made her the first African-American woman to be elected to the Senate from Mobile County and the second one in the state of Alabama. In two thousand and eight, Senator Figures became the first African-American woman in Alabama to become the Democratic nominee for the US Senate. And she made history when she was elected by her Democratic Senate colleagues to serve as minority leader in two thousand and thirteen. Today, we celebrate Vivian Davis Figures. Her twenty-two years of service in the Senate now makes her the longest-serving female in Alabama State Senate.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. District four, Councilman Reynolds.
No announcements.
District seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Sunday, I joined with the Ravine Revelers for their children's parade, which is Ridgeline area. A great turnout, lots and lots of children, really unique creative floats. I want to thank everyone in the neighborhood for welcoming me and for allowing me to be their grand marshal. It was a wonderful parade. It's always good to see all the kids turn out for things like these. And of course, all the parents. I think we're just as excited, if not more so, than the children were. On Friday this week, I'll be participating in two parades, and they both start at about the same time. So, it'll be interesting to see how it'll work that out. But the Hillsdale Seniors will be holding their annual parade at the recreation center there. And then just across the street at Friendship Missionary Baptist Church, they will be holding a Mardi Gras parade as well. So, I'll be participating in both of those and look forward to seeing everybody. Then, coming up after Mardi Gras, I'll be joining Mr. Penn on the after Mardi Gras parade circuit in Mobile Terrace. We have the annual motorcade. That will be February twenty-fifth. In Mobile Terrace lineup is on Lincoln Boulevard. It starts at three o'clock, and always a great turnout for that. We'll have the city floating again. So, just hope everyone turns out for that and look forward to seeing everyone during Mardi Gras.
Thank you, Vice President Gregory. District five, Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I usually don't have very much to say at this point in the meeting, but I'm going to claw back some of my minutes this morning. First thing I'd like to say is kind of a housekeeping announcement. If you're, if you live in the city of Mobile and your garbage is picked up on Tuesday and you put it out Tuesday morning, you're going to be disappointed because they're not going to be picking up garbage on Tuesday. They're going to be picking it up on the Monday, the day preceding Tuesday. So, again, if your garbage is usually picked up on Tuesday, put it out Monday morning. That's the day it'll be picked up. We had a very good meeting in District five last week to talk about traffic management during the closure of South McGregor Avenue from Dolphin Street down to Airport Boulevard, which will begin in forty-five days or so. The project, as I said, will be a complete rebuild of the street from Dolphin Street down to Airport Boulevard and will last about two to three years, during which time the road will be closed to through traffic. If you use this stretch of road on a regular basis, you should begin now to consider other routes. Please use main thoroughfares and do not go through the neighborhoods. People live on these streets in these neighborhoods. They and their children and pets are not used to heavy traffic, and the streets were not designed to carry heavy traffic. The police will be out in force. And if you run a stop sign or you speed through these neighborhoods, you're going to get a ticket. The ticket stop-start at a hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Do yourself and others a favor by avoiding going through the neighborhoods. Please do continue to patronize the businesses that are located in the shopping centers to the east and west of McGregor Avenue. Access to them will not be impeded throughout the entire construction period. Next item. Recently, National Public Radio reported that the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives had released a federal report on guns used in crimes. The data stretches from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one. The ATF found that fifty-four percent, fifty-four percent of traced crime guns were recovered by law enforcement more than three years after their purchase. Those guns were legally purchased but were later used in crimes. A huge way those legally purchased firearms get into the hands of criminals is through theft. In five years, there were more than one million firearms stolen from private citizens and reported to authorities. Now, that's just the ones that were reported to authorities. There may have been millions of others that were stolen and not reported to the authorities. We have a serious problem with guns in this country and with guns that are not being stored safely. Imagine how many lives might have been saved if these guns had not been stolen, had been, had been secured safely. Every town gun safety, a nonprofit that advocates for gun control, reports that households that locked both firearms and ammunition were associated with a seventy-eight percent lower risk of self-inflicted firearm injuries and an eighty-five percent lower risk of unintentional firearm injuries among children and teens compared to those that locked neither. Roughly four point six million children live in a home with loaded and unlocked firearms, studies have shown. If you own a firearm, please secure it so that it cannot fall into the hands of anyone who might harm themselves or others. Finally, Mr. President, I'd like to talk just very briefly about the nature of the city council. In this country, in most political entities, there is a separation of powers. This starts with United States Constitution, and power is divided into three entities, the executive, the legislative, and the judicial. What you see sitting before you today is the legislative body of the city of Mobile. The people up here have no executive authority. We cannot tell any citizen, any, anyone who works for the city of Mobile, except maybe this lady right down here and one of these few people, what to do. There are two thousand other people working for the city. We can't tell them what to do. It's a legislative body. We pass ordinances and resolutions. Now, the other thing to remember about this being a legislative body is our meetings are not a public forum. They're a place where we can enact resolutions and ordinances affecting the city of Mobile. We permit people to come speak to us. It is not a right, it is a privilege. And if you're going to be granted the privilege to speak to the city council, you have to adhere to the rules we have established. And if you don't adhere to the rules, my own personal opinion, not speaking for my colleagues, is that you should be prevented from speaking to the city council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. This last week, we had mentioned Black History and had a moment. This week, I wanted to feature another native of Mobile, which is worldwide known, which is Henry Louis Aaron, which was born February the fifth, nineteen thirty-four, and unfortunately passed his life on January the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. Nicknamed Hammer, also known as Hammer Hank, was an American professional baseball right fielder who played twenty-three seasons in Major League Baseball from nineteen fifty-four through nineteen seventy-six, the MLB. He was considered one of the greatest baseball players in history. He spent twenty-one seasons with the Milwaukee Atlanta Braves in the National League and two seasons with the Milwaukee Brewers in the American League. At the time of his retirement, Aaron held most of the game key careers, power hitting records. He broke the longstanding MLB record for the home runs held by Baby Ruth and remains the career leader for thirty-three years. He hit twenty-four or more home runs every year from nineteen fifty-five through nineteen seventy-three and is one of the only two players to hit thirty or more home runs in a season at least fifteen times. Not only that, Mr. Aaron was a great baseball player, but he was also a great entrepreneur. Black History Moment for this week. And also, on next week, I started planning to have some community and district meetings, and we'll start announcing them on next week. Is there anything else from this council?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, just one question based off of the reminder on the trash. Is the city going to send out a text notification that that is going to change so we can make sure that that goes out?
Yes, there's a social media that'll probably go out in the next day or so and text notification as well. Thank you.
Anything else from this council? Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
Properly moving, second, ending the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?